Sean will be here, but we're to start without him, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And then. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second?
A second.
Do we need to, before we approve the agenda, make a motion to change?
Yeah. We need to amend the agenda to move seven point four to closed session.
I'm already ready.
Okay, how about this, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment of removal of seven point four to closed session.
I second. Motion has been made to approve the agenda with the amendment of moving item seven point four to closed session and that's been seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. opposed, motion approved. Do we have any?
We do not.
Any open forum speakers, okay. Item four, approval of the consent agenda. Of a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, motion approved. Approval of transfers and payment of bills.
Um, no, we've got to do summer trip.
If you approve the consent agenda as an item, it covers four one and four two.
Yeah.
You don't have to do them item by item.
Yeah, so the consent agenda includes the minutes I, I should have said it, and the F A S and retro.
Do you have any questions about the F A S and retro?
Do I have a motion to approve transfer payment of bills?
I motion to approve approval of transfer payment bills.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on, on bills?
How much does it cost this month to run school?
Costs about the same every year, won't really change until we get to, or every month, sorry, until we get to June. June is a heavier month for us, we pay out several things, including summer school will be added on to that. We have some final bills, we also pay out leave balances and also our coverage for substitutes. And that amount typically varies somewhere between, well, summer school can be fairly heavy. Just the staffing for that adds an additional one hundred thousand dollars to our monthly bill. Putting it around pretty close to about the half a million dollars for the month of June. But May is typically not very different for us.
All the summer, we've drafted the checks for the year it was paid out in June.
We do, but those, although we process them, they actually don't, uh, they don't show up or they're, they don't count, so to speak, on this fiscal year as of six thirty, so we process them, we load them up. But what comes out of our fund one, fund two, and this fiscal year balance is only up to that six thirty date. But we do have about, uh, between three quarters of a million and one million dollars of expenses that we load into our system before June thirtieth, you are correct, because we do, uh, May this time of year, we do June payroll, then June for July, June for August, and.
Summer school.
In summer school. So it, it gets fairly steep, fairly quickly.
There's usually about six or seven people inside.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All those, there's a motion to second on the, on the table, so all those in favor of approving transfer payment of bills, please raise your right hand. As opposed. Okay, reports, elementary report.
Good evening, I hope everyone's enjoying this nice spring weather we have going on. Uh, our current enrollment at the elementary is at two eighty-one, that is only, uh, one away from where it was at the beginning of the year. We were at two eighty, so we're up one, um, but it's more than February, we have some people move in and move out, so just, so you have kind of an idea. So our enrollment stayed pretty much level throughout the year, uh, beginning to end, even with kids moving in and out. Um, celebrations, our students worked really hard to meet their second attendance challenge goal, we had a blast celebrating like the fall school dodgeball. So it's been fun to see them really own attendance this year and really take charge and make sure that they're at school as much as possible. We also recently, in the past month or so, have a lot of students who have taken on leadership roles within our building without being asked to, such as greeting students in the morning, um, just being really helpful with anything they can, that's been really cool to see. And we're also putting some things into place so that we have a team next year who also, a student-led team, who's going to help give tours and things like that to new students. So I'm super excited to see student leadership taking off and it's all, they're doing it all, really, it's amazing to see. So I just want to say thank you to them. Knowledge pool, again, we honored them last month, they did a wonderful job representing our school at our conference knowledge pool, as well as the Jeff City invites us to come take part in their quiz pool, and so that was really fun to do, the kids did a great job. The first grade living zoo and second and third grade spring concert were both super successful, so thank you to those teachers and Mr. Campbell who helped run those concerts, it was, it was really just a good time, you could see how awesome the kids did at practicing, but they were also happy and enjoying it, so that was wonderful to see. We had an amazing time with culture, celebrating our teachers during teacher appreciation week, I just want to say thank you to them for all that they do. They're really putting in some hard work, um, this year has been a year that we've really owned our data, they have data posted consistently outside their wall every month, um, outside their doors, and they're really doing a good job of switching that out and keeping it accurate, but also getting the kids involved. So I really appreciate all the hard work they're putting into that. Um, on instruction, in your board packet, you will find the data, um, from iReady for the beginning of the year and the end of the year. So, uh, still not quite where we want to be, but over this course, the course of this year, we have shown tremendous growth. So I've included both where we were at as a building at the beginning and at the end of the year cycle, as well as, um, for each individual grade level. So you can see, um, kids really started to move over in their lesson, or in their growth and really moved to a whole level, um, some of them even more than one level, so that was really cool. We also had a lot of students who met their stretch goal, um, so in iReady you have typical growth, which is your typical growth that a kid would make in a year, and then you have a stretch growth, growth, um, goal. If they were really, really ambitious, this is how far, um, iReady says that they think they could get, and a lot of those kids met both the typical and the stretch goal. So that was really cool to see, um, and a lot of them were honored today at our awards ceremony for that, so that was really cool as well. Um, next year we'll be taking a look at adopting a Eureka Math Squared resource to help students with achievement in math. That will help kind of just foster some common language and vocabulary, um, as we try to move some of those maths forward. So as you'll see in iReady, uh, the reading's a little bit higher for us overall as a building than math, and that's to be expected as we've really been working on reading this past, last couple of years. Um, I, and then in front of you, I laid a badge book, so, um, we're going to try these next year, it's something I learned about at an administrative conference. So they'll have a cover on them too, with a look something like this, this is a second grade example, uh, school district shared about tier two instruction, how can we improve it? So it's basically, some grade levels included more, so this one has more than five and five, um, that I'm going to talk about here in a minute. But this is kind of the goal of where we want them to be for that specific standard, and this is kind of like an intervention playlist, if you will, how they can show mastery of what we want them to overall. And so essentially, students are trying to earn, and it would have our mascot here, a badge or a sticker. And to do that, for each standard, each of these checkboxes, they would show three days of mastery for each checkbox. And so kind of what the school district said that they did and they were super willing to share and were really amazing about it, um, is they kind of took a look at the standards, so there's tons of standards for each grade level, the badge books wouldn't cover it all, but what are the five most important, um, reading standards and the five most important math standards that they need to know to really be successful in the next grade level? And then they created badge book stations during their reading and math rotations that really gave them the opportunity to really hit these standards over and over and over and over again on a daily basis. And so once they have, um, like I said, three days of mastery under each checkbox, then they would get, earn that badge for that standard. So just a way to really get our students owning their data, tracking their data, and also giving them specific ways of how they can show their mastery in different ways, because there are a lot of parts to each standard, so breaking it down for them and giving them more achievable chunks at a time, I think could really help, um, and then it also gives them exactly laid out for them the whole year what they need to be working on. Uh, for the younger grades, of course, we would have more visuals and stuff like that, um, because at the beginning of the year, they wouldn't be able to read these. So these are just the idea that we're going to try, um, and kind of switch up our RTI model a little bit to kind of include some of those standards. So we're hitting them heavier and helping them be successful in the next grade level as well as the one they're currently in. The other important thing to note is everybody would be working on grade level standards with these, so what is the second grade standard, that's what everyone's working on, so that we can make sure everyone's accessing that tier one level of instruction. So we're really excited, staff and I have talked a lot about that, we're excited to try it out and see how it goes and see how it can help our kids move and also give them ownership of their data and their progress. Are there any questions about anything?
No, that's good, I really like these charts that show the beginning of the school year and the end, that's, that's very interesting.
Yeah, our kids have done a great job, they, they've really been excited about it and they're always excited about how many levels they've passed, um, on their individualized pathways and how much they've grown. So teachers have done a really good job of instilling that love for learning and also the passion that, to see how much they improve. They've really liked having that goal to work towards this year.
When we, when we went through and you kind of presented this data initially, we had a lot of really good results across the board, not necessarily just one grade level or one person, but there were a couple people, and I wish my memory was better than, than it is at times, but I remember there being a couple people that had nearly, if not a hundred percent of their kids in green. Anyone in particular that sticks out to you as just really knocking it out of the park?
Yes, um, so I remember that conversation, so, um, Mrs. Flood, or yes, Ms. Flood's class and Mrs. Stix's class, um, when I was initially looking at it, theirs were highly, highly in green. Overall, grade level, I will tell you, kindergarten rocked it out this year in both subjects. Um, reading, they had eighty-four percent, I think it was, by the end of the year, um, that were in, on grade level for reading, that's amazing. Um, so I'm excited to see too, for the upper grades, how it correlates with math, um, and really get a good taste of that. But kindergarten and third grade overall, those grade levels really showed great growth and great improvement, and so I'm really proud of everyone for their hard work, but those two grade levels really deserve to be recognized because they made a ton of progress and they have a ton of kids that are on grade level or above.
Is the last class to be affected by COVID, the fifth graders or fourth graders? Just trying to place that.
I would almost kind of say both, just in the sense that even if it wasn't that year, they were still affected by kind of the aftermath of that, um.
I think our heavy hit class was fifth grade this year, maybe it was fourth, but I thought, I thought they were in fifth grade.
Uh, yes, because last year they would have been in fourth, so I think that's correct.
That's the way I remember it, too.
So I do think we'll see, we'll start to see an increase kind of as kids are coming in kindergarten, like I said. Um, I felt like we've, kindergarten specifically is a grade level that's really stood out to me this year as making a ton of progress and their kids are at a way different point than, than we have been in the past at, at the end of the year. So that's good, because then that's going to trickle down to first, second, third, fourth, and it's just going to keep going. So I'm really excited to see where this goes, I'm also, like I said, really excited to see how iReady, um, truly correlates to our math. Excited to start digging into that when it's time.
Like, it's just interesting that they're already that successful, they weren't, like, you know, daycare's closed down, preschool's closed down. Like, they didn't have all of that happening to them, and so it'd be interesting to see what the data shows for.
Absolutely.
That being four or five years ago, they were also kind of infant to that first walking toddler, so they probably got a lot of parent support and a lot of interaction with parents that kids may not typically have at the age, so.
I'm sure.
I wonder if there's something that's missing.
Yeah, just really cool to see, so I'm excited to see the continued growth that we make, but thank you to all of our teachers because really they have really, really owned the data this year and really made changes to progress us in a positive way. So I'm very thankful for all of their hard work and dedication to our kids. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, facilities.
Good evening, everyone, don't really have too much to report. Uh, Gray is doing an awesome job, uh, just goes and goes and goes, and it's awesome. I'm pretty happy with that, staffing is good, uh, we're getting ready to start our summer projects and, uh, carrying into all the rooms and relaxing and touching up and painting and fixing scratches and the things we do over the summer. A lot of grass here lately with all the rain, and honestly, just maintaining and doing some preventative maintenance, making sure iReady is still going good.
It's working in here right now.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just honestly, I'm just looking to see if you guys have any questions for me?
How, how is the construction project, I guess you kind of have to work around them, but.
Yeah, yeah, um, we're, it's a give and take, kind of linger, sometimes they're in the wave, sometimes they're, we're in the wave. So we just, uh, we just work with it, it's all going pretty good. I think they will be digging back in our road again, going to the back tomorrow, which is not going to affect anything because I told them they had to wait till after the trash trucking and putting some gutter work in to those pipes. So I wish we had any, two more disruptions back there, so I think we're doing pretty good.
Good.
We don't have any questions for you now, sit back, David.
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Superintendent.
So especially at this time, the, this time of year, our culture and climate is built through one of two things. We're either kind of adapting and confronting challenges or we're celebrating, and, uh, we've done a lot of the first this year, and so this is our time for celebrations, we have eighth grade graduation going on tonight, which I think is a very positive thing. Uh, we've had elementary celebrations all day today and class awards, so that's been fun. Uh, if you would like to come tomorrow, we're serving our end of year awards luncheon, uh, we'll get out eleven fifteen. Buses will roll at about eleven twenty-one, and by, I guess, is eleven thirty, eleven thirty-five, all of our parents will be out of here. And so we should start our award ceremony about that time, if you'd like to come and grab something to eat, we'd love to have you. Uh, as Kami pointed out, our staff barbecue and teacher appreciation week went really well, that's always fun. We do it a week early, and we do that very intentionally, we just want to focus on that. This last week is all about graduation and award ceremonies, and we're really focused on students, but we focus on teachers the week before, and that seems to be going really well. Our celebrations too, in particular, Joyce Hafner's retirement last night, we had over at Dave's a dinner after a short gathering here. That was pretty well attended, and, you know, anytime somebody works for you spanning four decades, it's a pretty big deal. Uh, you know, a lot of students have passed through, uh, with her influence, so we're celebrating that. We're also celebrating, uh, Ms. Higginbotham will not be Mrs. Higginbotham when she steps foot on campus, uh, following tomorrow. She'll be, she'll be getting married, so we've been celebrating that with her. Next Tuesday, she'll be leaving sometime tomorrow, I didn't get an invitation and, uh, that bothers me, you know, if I'm. But she'll be Mrs. Otto the next time we see her for summer school, so congratulations, Kami. If you don't mind joining me in a moment of silence for Mr. David Otto. All right, thank you. Personnel, staffing, uh, we're still looking for a couple of teachers, we need another nurse. Uh, we have high school math and middle school social studies, so we're beating the brush to find good candidates for that, but other than that, we're looking pretty good. Say again? Oh, we'll, we'll get to that in, in closed session, but we will have one more that we discuss in closed session. Professional development, uh, we're moving into exchange day training and planning right now, and we'll do that, uh, actual training in July, and that'll all be directly aligned with our campus and district improvement plan, so we're looking forward to that. Uh, facilities, eh, for the most part, kind of, you know, knock on wood, I know this is plastic, but Cliff's department's kind of normalized and really the anomalies and the unique things that he's dealing with is mostly due to construction, and, uh, so we're taking, taking on that. Just trying to be adaptive and flexible so that we can still have school. We did consider, you know, we're, uh, going to replace this entire parking lot with a concrete, uh, parking lot, and they did approach us about doing that all this summer. They approached us yesterday, and so we started, so we would have started that tear out on Tuesday. So, uh, that, that worried me a little bit, considering we're going to have summer school here, it's still about half the district. But, uh, honestly, I, I put them off, and one reason in particular, I want the parking lot to be one of the last things that are, that are done. It's kind of like sweeping the floor in the kitchen, once you're done with the counters, you don't want to do it before. Uh, I don't, really don't want a year of construction traffic on that parking lot, it's kind of like dog years. Uh, so we're going to put that off and we'll, we'll work on our schedule for next summer for that. Uh, putting in rebar and concrete, they will be doing that concrete over the next couple weeks. They were hoping while they had all the equipment here, because it's the same contractor, that they could maybe do the parking lot. Probably would help them to a degree, but I don't think it really helps us a whole lot. Uh, so we're not going to do that. Uh, they will be working on that, that chunk that gets us access to the asphalt parking lot so that they can do the, the main parking lot next year, but not the main parking lot now. Uh, fine arts, we have, uh, we have our spring band and choir barbecues and celebrations and contests. I would like to throw out a line, if there's anyone interested in being, helping us with our band boosters. That's dissolved over time, it's a really important role, if you know anybody to send our way, uh, between Kevin and Aaron and I, we will give them a great deal of support, uh, to help run our band boosters and any of our, our fine arts boosters in general, if anyone's interested. Uh, baseball track and golf, uh, had some school records going on with, uh, relays with some of our kids, that was a lot of fun. And so we're enjoying those summer sports, got to watch a lot of baseball this week. Uh, Russellville got them, saying he is always tough, they put a good look on us, but, so, uh, we'll be starting kind of that playoff run here shortly and, and going into postseason for track. Budget and finance, Tan Shaw, I looked up real quick, uh, Mr. Hunt, actually tipped a little over four hundred thousand this month. Four hundred and twelve thousand dollars were the total of our bills. And then I'll dig into budget and budget numbers a little bit, uh, more here in a minute in that actual discussion item.
Discussion items?
Budget preliminary, so a few things impacted our budget significantly this year. Of most particular and noteworthy is the HVAC repair, uh, to the elementary. All said and done with the services and the annual service contract that we're contemplating in next year's budget, which I have in there, we're talking well over a hundred thousand dollars just in repairs and maintenance for that system. And I don't have to remind you, maybe a couple members, we spent over more than a quarter of a million dollars on that, uh, repairing it for the, uh, the valving issues that we had. That finished up the very beginning of my tenure here, uh, Dr. Smith managed and led that. That was a pretty significant blow that took, uh, just short of about two fund balance percentage points off of us. And so we're going to probably end up right around that twenty-nine percent mark, I predicted thirty and a half percent. So about, about one and a half to two percent below our fund balance mark. We do have some budget burdens for twenty-five, twenty-six that were included this year, we did do a step increase. We increased, uh, increased, uh, our healthcare costs, uh, and that subsidy from us. The amount of healthcare that we pay for our employees was five eighteen thirty-one, and we approved earlier in the year to cover the increase, which, uh, makes our contribution a little bit higher in five twenty-nine twenty-seven. That cost us about thirty thousand dollars for that. Uh, we do have an increase in service-related costs, so, you know, this spring has been a lot of me opening the mail for whatever service provider to let me know that they're going to charge me more next year. And so I've gotten, uh, that from the water department, I've gotten that from Three Rivers, I've gotten that from the trash service. Uh, I met with Joe Noonan and Rudolph, of course, his, uh, costs are going up as well, so we'll experience about on average a six percent, uh, increased cost there. Misha, uh, and, uh, the officiating, uh, group consortium, our, our cost of officiating for next year is going to go up again, and so we're looking at about a sixty or seventy percent increase there. Uh, of course, we'll have the enhancement grant that we applied for, I believe that'll be improved. That'll only cost us about fifteen thousand or, uh, one-fifth of a fund balance point. We will be doing full, uh, career ladder as it was, uh, as it was planned, will cost us just under a hundred thousand. We'll complete the purchase, the purchase of Eureka Math, that math curriculum at the elementary level. Other than that, we just did, uh, some money movement, we're not spending anymore, as a matter of fact, we, we withdrew a little bit where we just weren't spending the money year after year. The best example I can give of that is our equipment rental, there was no need to put ten thousand dollars in equipment rental because most of the time we're borrowing equipment, our, our community's really good for that. If it's not state tech, it's one of the local contractors or businesses that just bring the equipment and drop it off. So we reduced that, we did move it, some of that into our maintenance and repair costs for HVAC, just, just to pad that a little bit, but we're not really spending any more money, uh, than we have to, so to speak. With, with that being said, our fund balance will end up being within a percent or so of exactly where it is at the end of this year, at the end of next year, which tells us that we've hit kind of an equilibrium, so to speak. Uh, we cannot, we cannot take on any significant additional costs, by that I mean hundreds of thousands of dollars without a change in revenue and resource. Uh, the state budget is on the governor's desk, I anticipate that'll be signed, uh, and if you recall, last year, we moved, we, we made a bold move to thirty-seven thousand last year, it cost us a lot of money. But we did that in anticipation of Senate Bill seven twenty-seven that mandated the minimum salary also. also including an increase to the state adequacy target or the state's formula funding. So we've already accounted for that in our budget. And thank God, and I literally mean that because I sweated out quite a bit while they got funding initially for us, that 7145 just means we're gonna cover that $37,000 without going into deficit to do it. A particular challenge for us, you know, back when we made that plan, the, the target was $38,000 minimum base salary. It moved to 40 since then. So now not only do we have $1,000 for every teacher and everybody on that formula, now we have $3,000. Our cost to get there tripled. Well, we have enough to cover us at 37, and I think by the end of next year or so, we would be able to make it to 38. The hundreds of thousands of dollars in recurring costs every year, that, we're not gonna have a, unless we find another revenue source, it's not gonna be covered. And we're gonna be dipping into our fund balance to do that if the teacher-based salary grant goes away. I can't say this enough. Even if it stays in place, all we're doing is taking our least experienced teachers. We're crowding them all at 40,000 in our, our three, four, and five, kind of our mid or the beginning of the mid-level teacher. They just don't get a raise for six or seven years. And a seven and eight-year teacher makes the same thing as a zero-year teacher. That makes us very uncompetitive in the market for our professional staff. And so we'll, we'll continue to search for solutions there. Our assessed valuation, actually, once that was sorted out, we were pretty close. We were within 1% of what it actually was. Our total assessed valuation is just under $87 million at $86.9 million. I will tell you in the budget that I'm going to present to you next month, I am not accounting for any increase to AV, even though it's a reassessment year. I'm a little leery of counting on that money. That'll be about a $50,000 swing one way or another. We're about three-quarters of a fund balance per, percent. So I anticipate us finishing just a hair under 30% for 2026. We, we'll level out as long as nothing crazy comes our way. If, by the way, between now and June, you wanna spend, or our June meeting, you wanna spend some time with me and our budget planning document, I welcome you to come by the office. I'll go through every single line with you and tell you exactly what our revenues are, where we spend them. Believe it or not, I'll be glad to see some money. And talk about the budget. Yeah. But so if you are curious and really want to know right down to the dollar, please come and talk to me. It's hard to fit even a summary in to two hours if you just go, I mean, you're scrolling down thousands of cell lines. But it is interesting if you're, if you ever just want to spend the time doing it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And even, even at 40,000, we're not even competitive there.
That is the minimum. That, that is the message that I would like to get. We are, guys, if we shoot to 40,000, we are tied for last place across the state of Missouri. That is absolutely true. And we've got to consider this. In '26, '27, part of that 727 mandates a 3% increase. We no longer get to decide step only. It's stepping 3% or 3% only. I mean, we could go that direction, but then we wouldn't be awarding experience. That means '26, '27, our base salary is 412. '27, '28, our best base salary is 424-something. The year after that, it goes 435. And by '29, '30, it's $45,020. From where we were at just nine years ago of $29,000, we will add 50% additional wages and benefits just for our certified staffing in about a decade, decade and a half. All while, and I know this is kind of self-centered, we have had, for the last decade, we have had the exact same tax rate, the exact same. So costs are doing this. Our tax rate is absolutely leveled. And it, we'll have future conversations about that, I'm sure.
July board meeting.
All right. So in July, just took a look forward because honestly, we think this every July, and this is my third July, so I'm beginning to know what I'm doing a little bit. All we do is approve milk prices, meal prices, and one other thing that, oh, and we do summer school report. Other than that, it's very, very light. So what I would like to propose, if it is convenient for you, I will be here anyway, and I would love to talk to you. But if you would like, we can forego the July board meeting, do our summer school report in August, and approve meal and milk prices in June. Should we need to have a special meeting for hiring or something like that, we can always do that and have a short agenda and call everybody in. But it could plan so that you could do something in July if you didn't want to be tied to here. Totally up to you. Like I said, I'll be here.
I'm over.
One caveat also, if you decided to do that, we would need to vote in June to do that, but you would also vote for me to go ahead and pay the bills because we want to do that in July. That would not circumvent by sending you a copy of our approved transfer and payment of bills. I would send that out to you. You would review it individually and just call me with any concerns or call Dr. Strong with any concerns. And so there, it wouldn't be no accountability July. I would still send you all that information. We just wouldn't have to meet formally. And we would need two board members to sign checks.
That's fine. I can ask questions too. Hope we vote on that next month or...
You can vote on it now, but you know, ideally by, by June, we would want to have that voted on. It is in discussion only this month, but we could take a vote on it.
I move we move the July board meeting.
And approve for transfer payments bills?
That would have to be stated in the June meeting, not the...
Oh. Chelsea said the way she understands it has to be done, it will be in the June meeting about this one.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. If we're following the template that was given us, skip one.
That makes sense.
So we'll have that ready.
Dies for life in a second. Okay. Board meetings for the next school year?
I laid out all of the third Thursdays, and then there's a calendar in front of you. If we needed to adjust any of those, this would be a great time for us to decide to do that, or we could do it later. But wanted you guys to be aware of when those were hitting and give you some options early on if you needed them.
I was just curious. We had good intentions when we moved the meetings from Tuesdays to Thursdays, but it seemed like, it seems to me like maybe Thursdays have been harder for everyone to make it, and then harder for your administrators to, it seems like there's just more going on on a Thursday night than a Tuesday night. And so it seems like it is, has been a little bit more difficult. I don't know if, maybe I'm the only one thinking that, but I just wanted to put that out there. If we reverted back to Tuesday, I would be against it if it would help us with consistency and turnout and quality.
Totally up to you guys. I think the administrative team can adjust either way. One advantage that it does give us having Thursdays is in working with the UD, that has been one. Now, disadvantage...
Has it helped?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
They work with, but, but that's just one thing. You know, if there are other disadvantages that we're experiencing, please let me know, but I can do my...
Not really the only reason we moved it to, yeah, Thursday.
I will say as a shout out to the unterrified Democrat, they work really well with us on all of their stories and coming and doing interviews and getting materials. I, I feel like that relationship is about as strong as I've ever seen in a school district.
Good. Any other thoughts on legislative update?
A few things that are coming our way. Like I said, the budget is on the governor's desk, and I anticipate that'll be signed. A couple of other things, Senate Bill 63 and 68. 63 is the participation of homeschool students in our activities. There are some guidelines there. And I've included kind of that summary for you guys to read through. It's here. We're gonna have to figure that out, figure out how to manage it. There's some things about it that I think are positive, and there are some things that I think are challenges. Probably my hesitation with that more than anything is that our student athletes meet a very high bar. And we do not, that bar does not deviate based off students. All of them hit the same marks in order to participate. And we will not have a quality control mechanism in homeschool participation. There's one. The second thing most often cited is that homeschool parents pay school taxes. I have an above-average home in, in Osage County. The average home is $238,000 and change, and my home doesn't constitute 15% of the state adequacy target in terms of school taxes. As a matter of fact, not even close to that. It's more closer to like eight or nine percent. So those additional formula monies that we get, the prophecy, all of that, that pays for those programs. And we will not receive any of that state aid in order to provide programs for those that participate. And I'm not, I'm not saying that they don't contribute to a degree in state taxes, but it, or, or in their real estate taxes, but it comes nowhere near the cost of educating our kids and actually providing those programs. To be, to be determined what the impact and what the cost will be. I don't know if we're gonna have a, a lot of homeschoolers that want to play sports and activities with us or not. But I'll be monitoring that, and I'll update you. There's a lot of districts scrambling to figure out just how they would like to do it. I'm gonna listen to a lot of great ideas. I'm gonna sit with a lot of superintendents across, and ADs and principals across the state and come back with what I think suits us best, and then we'll work out how we're gonna do it.
Is there not a certain amount of hours they have to come, or is it, they're just going open if they were, if they're homeschooled, they can play sports?
If they're homeschooled and they live inside of our district boundaries, and we are not allowed under this to actually require them to participate in our regular educational programming at all. Not a minimum number of instructional time, anything like that. The only thing we can do is require that they meet the participative, participation requirements that our students do. For instance, it's not homeschool, so if you miss a practice, you can still get to participate because it's homeschool. What's our rule for missing practices for all of our athletes? They have to, they have to abide by that. The things that we won't have control on, our students have an attendance requirement. So if they skip too many days of instruction, they can't play. If they don't learn on the day of the competition, they can't go to the game. If they don't have a certain grade point average, they don't have the game. If they don't have a certain behavior, then they can't play. Our athlete code of conduct, our participation agreement, none of that applies outside of the team to those students, only when they're participating. And that's different than our students. If our student goes out and does something that he or she shouldn't do in the public, well, then they, they can't play for us. So far, that disciplinary metric cannot be applied, as I understand it, to homeschool students. That administrator, and the administrator is mom or dad, gets to decide. And I'm not saying they'll do a bad job. I'm just saying there's no guarantee in consistency there. I think some parents will hold their kids to a way higher standard than we hold our population at large. But I also think there's a significant number that there won't be much of a standard applied to participation. And extracurricular activities, to me, is a privilege that you earn through outstanding character and conduct. And we don't really have any quality control over that. And again, some homeschool parents do an amazing job, some don't. There's no way for us to...
So it's a pass. It's not a deal.
It's got, well, it needs to be signed by the governor, so.
So depending upon what occurs with signing, when would our school make any changes? It'd be the next, not this upcoming, but the following school year?
No, it's next school year. We would have to have this in place to roll July 1.
Ninety days after signing, isn't it?
Yeah, that's true.
So how about, like, if I remember, I read it, band also?
Band also.
So would they have to...
They would have to...
Attend?
They would have to attend band class.
Okay, that's...
That would be the same as practice. So they would have to come in for band class.
Clubs too?
No, not clubs. Extracurricular activities like are competitive. It does not include clubs.
Art tree. Because there was a homeschool kid that I know participated in art tree.
That's a club. And that's a gray area.
All right.
So I'll have to figure that out. That's a good question that I'm glad you asked me here before. I met with a bunch of other folks because I'll pose them.
Choirs, private stuff?
Choirs, exactly the same thing. Choir, band, your clubs should not. I believe there's a provision in there that says, also things like prom, they don't get to, they don't get to do that. It is what's deemed as extracurricular in that list. I'll let you know as I know, so there may be, I'd said I hadn't been sending you guys a lot of emails. We need to send you some updates, but conversations as I have them. The other that of particular interest will be Senate Bill 68, which is a cell phone ban, and that will be law. It requires us to have a policy, expectations, requires us to have a, include it in our code of conduct and consequence. By the way, schools and school districts have been banning cell phones for a long time. I think the law will add a level of gravity to it that might be helpful with it, but in the end, it will be about consistent enforcement across the board. I do anticipate some problems in reading through that legislation. You know, for emergency situations, well, how are you gonna use it in an emergency if I don't have it in my pocket? So now the kid's got it on it anyway, and every kid that you say, hey, you can't have that here is gonna say, it's for an emergency. There's also some exceptions for students with unique conditions. We already encounter, at least it's fair to say, a significant number of students that would say that without that cell phone, they experience anxiety, separation anxiety. And so I do anticipate that we're gonna get a lot of notes that say in order to make this student feel comfortable and less anxious, they need to feel connected to their world, and this contributes to anxiety. I think it's a paper tiger. If we want no cell phones, it, it depends on staff member by staff member saying, we don't do that here, put it away, and here's the consequences for it. If we get every staff member on the board, it's more powerful than them putting in a state legislator, state legislation. But it'll be interesting. It's gonna cost us, it's gonna be challenging, honestly.
Great. Central office summer hours?
We do this every year. Essentially, we just, you know, there's not a lot of people that want to interface with us over the summer, and so we reduce that, our office hours by one hour. And then we use that one hour, the accumulation of those one hours, to do professional development outside the duty day through the summer and at various points through the year. For instance, Chelsea goes to some professional development that occurs over the weekend, Saturdays and Sundays. And we just keep a log of those hours to make sure they're equivalent to the shortened day, and so that we're, we're still getting our money's worth with our staff. But we've had, I honestly haven't had any positive feedback. The indication to me is that we really haven't had any negative feedback that would suggest that that's not working for folks.
Okay. Summer school nurse?
This one, I want to make you guys aware. We, for the first time in a long time, don't have an LPN or an RN that is applied and available for our summer school nurse. So I've called Department of Health and Senior Services. I've been working, and so has Mrs. Higginbotham with our county health office. And we do have some options that include having a health room aide, which is a staff member that's been trained in CPR and AED and some other things. You know, medic, how to distribute medications. And we do have several of those. Actually, most of our coaches are pretty well-versed in that. But there are some additional classes that they'll take with, they just do some videos about EpiPens, that sort of thing. But we will have a health room aide this summer, and we will contract... But we will have a health room aide this summer, and we will contract, it's a pretty nominal fee, five hundred bucks for a health oversight for that to to advise us on our health and operation practices during summer school. We've sent out a letter. Has that gone out already?
Yeah, it went out this afternoon.
Yeah. Essentially, what we want people to know is we won't have a highly-trained LPN RN on campus, health room aide. And if their student has any medical condition that would require those professional services, we won't have them available. And then let them know what services we will have available. I just want you guys to know that that's the case.
What are the, this is maybe a dumb question, but what do the parochial schools in the county do? Do they, do they all have a?
They do, huh?
Okay.
A lot of them have kind of a health room aide where they just have a staff member that kind of takes care of that. And often, but I believe at St. George, it's the secretary up front that does that.
Secretary used to do it.
Yeah.
Still does.
Just curious.
I was most concerned from a liability standpoint, and that's a concern for me. But then secondly, does the community have an expectation that that we have a licensed healthcare professional? They do. So I wanna make sure that they're informed with the limitation in services so they don't come assuming one thing and experiencing another.
Thank you. Action items. SOP slash PT contract.
So our two contractors that were included in your bracket, we've worked with for quite a while. They have offered very competitive rates, and we've been very satisfied with their service. So this is just our annual update. By policy, we're not, we don't have to go out to bid for this if we're satisfied with the cost and the quality of service, and we are. We think they're very competitive. And we don't believe there will be any advantage going to market.
Let me make a motion. We approve the SOP PT contract for twenty-five, twenty-six.
I second. Is that worded adequately for both of them?
Yep.
Is there any just questions, discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Any other action items? Okay, our next meeting will be June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
No, twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
My bad, sorry.
I'm so close, guys.
Okay. A motion to adjourn to closed session.
I move we, I move we adjourn to closed session, Hassan. RSMO six ten point zero two one, ASD's subsections, relative, personal, ident- identifiable, identifiable employment information, personal action, legal actions involving public body and or privileged communications.
One second.
Motion of the Saturday. Rocco, Maran?
Yes.
Lori? Sean?
Yep.
Andy?
Andy?
Yep.
Jamie?
Yes.